Good evening. At this point in time, I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. If we'd please all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And at this point in time, I'd like to note all members of the Commission that are here this evening. To the far right is Gina Morgenstein, who is an alternate to this Commission and was appointed to this Commission approximately, probably what, a month ago or two months ago? And so, we welcome Gina to her first formal meeting. She had attended a workshop that we had prior. Next to Gina is Jeff Kohan, Commission Member. And next to my immediate right is Jim Fitzsimmons, a Commission Member. And to my far left is Larry Zabrowski, who is an alternate. At the table to my left is Cynthia Kleist, who is our Recording Secretary. Next to Cynthia is Casey Costello, our Town Planner. And next to Casey is Tim Baird of Mylone and McBroom, our consultants for our Plan of Conservation and Development. Before we get started, just from a historical note, I guess I'd like to just note one thing. I suspect most people know, today is the 72nd anniversary of D-Day, which occurred in June 6th of 1944, where over 160,000 Allied troops stormed the beaches of Normandy, France. They were supported by about 5,000 ships and about 13,000 airplanes. During that day, there was about 9,000 Allied troops that were either killed or wounded. But certainly with D-Day, that opened up the second front in Europe and led to the eventual surrender of Nazi Germany in May 1945. So, just a little bit of a historical perspective for today. But tonight's meeting is our public hearing on our Plan of Conservation and Development. And before I ask Mr. Fitzsimmons to read the legal notice, I'd just like to make a few comments. Tonight is the culmination of over a year of work in updating Wallingford's Plan of Conservation and Development. The Plan of Conservation and Development is a policy guide for the physical, economic, and social future of the community. It states policy goals and visions, and then provides recommended actions to help achieve those stated goals. The process began in November 2014, when the town put out to bid for a consultant to assist the town with its updating of the Plan of Conservation and Development. Mylone and McBroom were selected as the consultant. A steering committee was formed, which began work in March of 2015. There was certainly a great deal of time devoted to create a cohesive and a representative action-oriented plan. We had numerous discussions within the steering committee. We had public meetings for outreach. We did surveys. We had a booth at Wallingford that celebrated Wallingford. The two surveys that were used by the steering committee, one was a townwide survey, and in that survey, we had 1,811 people responded to the survey. And Tim, I think you can certainly confirm that, based on your prior experience, that that was a fairly robust representation for people participating in the survey. There was also a survey that was done just for the town center, and with that particular survey, 385 individuals commented. There was an initial draft of the plan. It was presented in November of 2015. And then, the proposed plan was submitted to the Town Council and the South Central Regional Council of Governments at the end of March 25th, 2015, thereby initiating a 65-day review period leading up to tonight's public hearing. You know, the steering committee has worked very hard to make this an inclusive, public process. There's been ample time leading up to tonight for anyone interested to be involved, participate, and contribute thoughts and ideas, as well as concerns to the plan. And obviously, this evening is presenting everyone with another opportunity to do that. You know, the Plan of Conservation and Development is required to be updated every 10 years by Connecticut General Statute 8-23. Now, while we're doing this to comply with the statutory requirements, the Steering Committee and the Planning and Zoning Commission wanted to take advantage of the opportunity to make this an accurate and comprehensive reflection of the town wants and needs, and how those might be accomplished. The Planning and Zoning Commission and the Steering Committee wanted to develop a very action-oriented plan, which we're confident that we've created. You know, a series of goals were to develop by the Steering Committee and its subcommittees, which were manifested in specific strategies, which are spelled out in the action plan. There's also a strong recommendation that an implementation committee be developed to pursue some of the recommended strategies. The above notwithstanding, the Plan of Conservation and Development is simply an advisory document, and it does not require or compel any action from the town or any agency or individual. It's a guidance document, and each agency will have to determine what strategies to pursue, subject to funding, resources, and how one went to pursue them. You know, the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Steering Committee also wanted to give some extra attention in the Plan of Conservation and Development to the center of town, known as our Uptown or Downtown, Uptown and Downtown. There was a great deal of discussion and public outreach on this topic, and some good strategies, you know, have been developed. Therefore, the Plan of Conservation and Development contains a section and a category in the action agenda just at the center of town. And I'd like to thank Mylone and McBroom, specifically Rebecca Auger, who unfortunately is not able to be here this evening, as well as Tim Baird. But I'd also very much like to thank all the members of the Steering Committee, which include Jim Fitzsimmons, Jeff Kohan, Craig Fishbein, John Laterno, Jim Wolfe, Mary Heffernan, Maria Harlow, Craig Turner, J. P. Balot, Dave Ledoux, Steve Lazarus, Gina Morgenstein, and Lucille Casagrande. I'd also very much like to thank the members of the public who participated along this route. In tonight's meeting, this is pretty much how it'll go. We're going to, I'm going to ask for some initial comments from our Town Planner, and then we'll have a summary presentation of the Plan of Conservation and Development in the process that led up to it, and that's going to be handled by Tim Baird at Mylone and McBroom. And then, we're going to have it open to the public for comments. And the next step then would, I would anticipate, closing the public hearing and then having deliberations amongst the Commission Members. So, at this point in time, I'd like to turn it over to Casey Costello, our Town Planner. And before I do that, I would ask Mr. Fitzsimmons to, thank you, Jim, to read the legal notice and to note all correspondence for the record. And one last thing, I'm not sure if I ever identified myself. I'm Jim Sycath, Chairperson of Planning and Zoning Commission. There you go, Mr. Fitzsimmons, all yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Legal notice, the Wallingford Planning and Zoning Commission will hold the following public hearing at their special meeting of Monday, June 6th, 2016, at 7:00 PM in the Robert F. Parisi Council Chambers, Town Hall, 45 South Main Street, Number 1. Adoption of the 2016-2026 Wallingford Plan of Conservation and Development. A copy of the proposed file, a copy of the proposed is on file in the Town Clerk's Office, 45 South Main Street, for public inspection during normal business hours, as well as in the Planning and Zoning Department. The proposed plan is also available on the town's website at town.wallingford.ct.us. Any questions can be directed to Casey Costello, Town Planner. We have, the first piece of correspondence would be the draft Plan of Conservation and Development dated 2016-2026. We've also received correspondence from the Department of Public Utilities Director George Adair, dated today's date, June 6th, 2016. On May 23rd, 2016, we received a letter regarding our referral to the South Central Regional Planning Commission of Connecticut. And on June 2nd, we received a memorandum from Aaron O'Hare, Environmental Planner, directed to Casey Costello. And we also have an attachment that was received, I believe today's date, with some revisions to the draft. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzsimmons. And now, I'll turn it over to our Town Planner, Casey Costello.
Thank you. Just quickly, I wanted to say that I think this was a very important and informative process for the town, developing this plan. We did try very hard to make it a very inclusive process and to involve all of the agencies that would have an interest in adopting the Plan of Development. We had a lot of meetings and a lot of productive discussions, and I think a lot of very helpful recommendations came out of the plan. I also have found, at least it seems to me, that this has sort of, hopefully, invigorated some members of the community and some agencies in terms of trying to sort of accomplish some of these priorities that were identified as part of this process. There was a lot of participation from the public, and I think there was some excitement around some of these elements. And I think that we have developed a plan with the help of our consultants, that because it's very action-oriented, will guide the community in pursuing some of the goals that were identified. I just also wanted to say that, I wanted to thank Mylone and McBroom for their wonderful job on all of this and guidance in all of this, as well as the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Steering Committee, and also all of the members of the public and town staff and the various town agencies, because this really is the community's plan. And without members of the community participating, we wouldn't be able to reflect what the community wants and needs for the future. So, along those lines, I will turn it over to Tim Baird from Mylone and McBroom. He will give a brief overview of the process and the plan that was developed.
Thank you, Jim, and thank you, Casey, for the introduction. I won't take much time here in... So, as Jim laid out, we've had a process that, with our involvement at least, has stretched about 14 months from the kickoff to today. It's taken us through two community surveys, two workshops, extensive and very positive involvement from all over the community, and has gotten us to the stage of the hearing. The process pulled in a great deal of productive feedback on everything from the focuses for the town center, concerns and strengths of the community, trends, how people use the community's assets. And we're very proud of the plan that we've produced at this stage. I think it does a great job of directing the community towards important goals that have been identified from a number of stakeholders. It really puts the direction towards where we're going, how we'll get there, and who's responsible for making these priorities happen. As Jim noted, it's a policy-guiding document. It is not binding, and the adoption of the 2016 plan puts Wallingford in compliance with the state's regulations on plans of conservation and development. The key priority recommendation of the plan, that was a strong point that came out of the Steering Committee, was the need to establish a Plan Implementation Committee with representation from boards and community commissions, as well as several non-town entities that have responsibility for implementing some of the key strategies of the plan, and to coordinate with each other and keep a running tally of the progress so far in implementing these goals, as well as to address any changes or shifts in priorities that might become necessary as the plan moves forward and conditions change on the ground. Creating a new town center zoning district was one of the key priorities for advancing the improvement of the town center as a whole, in order to align the zoning in this area with the community's priorities for development and what they'd like to see coming forward in the near future. To develop a town center parking plan, parking was certainly a common concern that we heard about loud and clear from the public, and we wanted to ensure that there was a plan coming out of this that would prioritize different types of improvements, whether that's wayfinding, physical improvements to key lots, and other mechanisms by which visitors to the town have access to better parking in the town center. Implementing the Transit-Oriented Development Plan, which occurred alongside this planning effort, is also a key priority of the plan in order to encourage relocation of land uses to appropriate areas, to invest in infrastructure that'll be complementary to the train station that'll be coming in, and ensure other forms of transportation that are occurring in that area dovetail well with the opportunities that the station provides. We took a close look at the I-5 and I-X zoning regulations and made recommendations around revising those in order to better achieve the goals of the town for commercial and industrial development in that area and to align with the needs of the market that we're seeing today, with some detailed recommendations on appropriate tweaks to move towards that. We recommended instituting a dedicated annual funding stream for maintenance and improvement of the town center sidewalks in order to really beef up the quality of pedestrian transportation amenities in that area, as well as other mechanisms for catalyzing redevelopment across the town. We recommended a phased redevelopment approach to the Wood and Kaplan property that needs to dovetail with the parking plan and other improvements that'll be taking place in that area, to focus on some signage coming into the town center, and other mechanisms for redevelopment. We want to ensure that this plan is taking a look at the regional context in terms of SCROGS and the state's representation, in terms of working with DOT on Route 5 traffic improvements and other traffic improvements, to, of course, work to find a replacement for Bristol Myers-Swibb in their facility, and to work to ensure that the new train station isn't going to bring negative impacts on the residential neighborhoods in that area. Based on the comments that we had heard so far, we made a number of revisions to the plan that seemed appropriate and moved it forward. We added some additional detail on existing land use and existing zoning to help provide some context for our zoning recommendations and the future land use plan. We made certain revisions to the action agenda in terms of clarifying the representation on the Implementation Committee, sustainability-related action agenda items, some of the supportive agencies that will assist the main entities responsible for pursuing certain goals, clarifying the utility service area terminology and boundaries, and clarifying a few details on the different roles that certain open spaces across the community play and their accessibility. We're also, based on recently received comments from the Environmental Planner, working on various clarifying revisions to the text and certain action agenda items, such as clarifying details on open space ownership and public access, and ensuring that the plan is pulling up on the most up-to-date environmental data sources and appropriate terminology. So, again, the full draft is available on the town website, and, well, here we are. So, with that, I think that wraps up what I have, and we can turn it over.
Before we open it up for a public comment, I just wanted to touch on a couple items. The Connecticut General Statutes, which is the statute regarding municipal plans of conservation and development, does require that the municipality refer the Plan of Development to your regional planning agency, which for us is the South Central Regional Council of Governments, and to your legislative body, both of which we did. COG did send back, you have in your packets, a letter supporting the proposed plan. The Town Council did hold a meeting to discuss the proposed plan, and Rebecca Auger provided a presentation for them, very similar to the one you just had, and they opted not to take any action, which is one of the options available to them. That not taking any action essentially doesn't impact your decision on the matter. It means that they chose not to comment on it. And then, the other thing that I wanted to touch on, I think there were a couple of other changes that have been made, and Tim, correct me if I'm wrong, based on comments that we received during this comment period. One was that references to the TOD have been added into the action plan and sort of beefed up in the action plan. In the package that you got tonight, was the addition of references to the administration under the supportive agencies for some of the action agenda items. That was a recommendation that came from the Corporation Council, Attorney Small, which certainly made sense that we should include the town's administration, as obviously, they have a role in a lot of these elements, in addition to the Town Council and you and the other agencies. And then, finally, there were comments from the PUC, Public Utilities Commission, and the Water and Sewer Division, which I know Mylone and McBroom worked to address, and then we did receive some comments back tonight, which were also provided to you in speaking with them. They're comfortable as long as you are, and I think we are, in you acting on adopting the plan tonight and including their comments as one of the revisions.
Thank you, Casey. I just have one question before I go out to the public, and that's, one of the first items you mentioned, inclusion of town administration as supporting agency. Where would that...
The mayor's office.
No, no, no. Where would that appear, though, in what...
Oh, I provided you with this handout, and that is...
That details it?
That is a copy of the action agenda, and I starred on there where the town, which items had the town administration added into them.
So, then, this would be revised with that inclusion?
Right, right. And that is also included as a suggested revision in your motion.
Gotcha. Thank you. All right. Does that take care of, I guess, Tim and Casey? Good. At this point in time, again, this is a public hearing. It's open to the public for their comments. Would ask that any members of the public that would like to speak, please just raise your hand, be recognized by the chair, come forward, state your name and address, and what your comments may be. At this point in time, I'd ask any members from the public that would like to speak. Yes, young lady in front.
My name is Mary Michinski, and I'm speaking, wearing two different roles, two different hats. First, I did want to congratulate the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Town Planner for excellent job on the state Plan of, the Town Plan of Conservation and Development. It's a really good tool. You used plenty of public input and surveys, meetings, and so on, with maps to lay out Wallingford's futures, and especially, it recognized the need for housing and retail choices that fit the changing demographics of the town. Very important. And the coming of commuter rail in early 2018, which is going to be a game-changer for the town of Wallingford. There are funding opportunities that can be used to partner the town with a developer, if the town chooses, who specializes in transit-oriented development. And this type of partnership has worked well to enliven downtowns and other communities, and could work really well in Wallingford if we choose to use that. The town would have to identify suitable parcels in advance to make this process work, of course. I have two specific requests for amendments, and I'm asking, now I'm speaking as Representative Mary Michinski for these amendment requests. The plan refers to the need to connect recreation areas and neighborhoods and workplaces and make it a sustainable community, and to improve the entry routes to downtown so that it appears to be an attractive town as people leave the Wilbur Cross Parkway and come into downtown. The plan does not mention the Hall Avenue improvements and the Senior Center trail link to the Quinnipiac River Linear Trail, which accomplishes many of the goals that the plan wishes to accomplish. The map on page 22, for example, does not show the proposed trail link between the Senior Center and the Quinnipiac River Linear Trail. This project has already received funding from the Council of Governments, and should be mentioned whenever the plan refers to the goal of completing Phase 4 and 5 of the linear trail and enhancing entrances to Wallingford. So, I would ask you to amend the plan to add, on page 74 and 75, complete the Senior Center trail link to the Quinnipiac River Linear Trail. And then, in addition, if you could add the Quinnipiac River Linear Trail Advisory Committee as a partner in the Community Lake planning discussions to ensure that the many proposed uses of the river corridor and Community Lake are harmonious with each other. We don't want, obviously, we don't want commissions and committees fighting over what goes where. And as the Linear Trail Committee is a major player in the lakeside area, it probably should be included in the planning. So, thank you, and thank you for doing the plan, and congratulations on completing it.
Thank you very much for your comments. I do have just one comment, because I'm looking in, just so I'm clear, on page 22, when you referenced the map...
Yes.
And if I'm looking at the map, it does, you know, show the Senior Center, and, you know, it appears that it's showing, you know, a link down to at least a portion of the Quinnipiac River Trail. So, I'm not, I'm not sure what you were referring to as far as showing on the map that...
Well, the link, the link is, the committee has designed it, and the town engineer, with the town engineers' partnership, is from the Senior Center through the woodlands around Community Lake Bed, and then up Oak Street, and then on Washington, and then Hall Avenue.
Okay, so it would be going down Oak Street, is that correct? Is that, so just I understand?
Yes, from the Senior Center, would head south through the woodland bordering Community Lake...
Gotcha.
And then, east on Oak Street, south on Washington, and west on Hall Avenue, linking the two areas of town together. That was the design that we submitted to the Department of Transportation. We had to revise the design because of a recalcitrant landowner, so we had to go around this landowner, and that's why there is a change in the plan. But the main thing I wanted the commission to understand is that there is funding for this project. We already won the funding, and we did have to change the design, but the project will connect these two areas, and that's one of the things the Plan of Conservation and Development wishes to happen.
Good. No, I understand now, as far as what you're referencing. Thank you.
Okay. And then, I also need to speak in my private role as staff for River Advocates of South Central Connecticut. We're a new 501(c)(3) that works on river protection for the lower Quinnipiac, the Mill and the West Rivers of South Central Connecticut, and I'm staff for that organization. We also have a board of, our board and our staff have extensive previous experience with QRWA, but now, we're a new organization that does the lower half of the Quinnipiac. And some of our previous projects are to create the fishway at Wallace Dam, to conduct stream walk surveys, to do education on stormwater management, control invasive species, and design a series of water trails and river guides. We do have an internship program with the town of Wallingford. We use high school interns from the Youth and Social Services Department, and they're being trained now to offer tours of the Quinnipiac. And River Advocates also works cooperatively with the South Central Regional Council of Governments on all three... Governments on all three rivers, and we're supported by grants to improve water quality and increase public access to the Quinnipiac from Wallingford to New Haven. We have a partnership with Quinnipiac University Biology Faculty, and we have boats which we keep in Wallingford. So because our mission coincides with many of the recommendations of the Town Plan of Conservation and Development, we are requesting that our organization be named as a partner in the plan for those natural resources projects that include references to Quinnipiac River or Community Lake. For example, on page 23, you could add River Advocates to that list of the representation organizations. And then pages 42 to 55, there's a terms key at the bottom of the page, you could add River Advocates of South Central Connecticut, abbreviation RA for that. Page 44, there's the Community Lake discussion, you could add River Advocates there.
Representative Maschinsky...
Page 74...
Excuse me. If you could just slow down a little bit, because I think we're maybe writing some things down, so if you could...
Okay.
I think that...
Well, there's, there's a number, there are page 23, the key at the bottom of 42 to 55, page 44, and the Community Lake discussion, and page 74, the Community Lake discussion. So if you could add River Advocates of South Central Connecticut. We're already working with the town and are therefore a partner and should be mentioned in the plan.
Okay.
And I have this in writing if you need this.
Absolutely, that would be great.
Okay.
We'd appreciate that.
Okay, and congratulations on finishing it up. It's really wonderful to see it laid out, and especially the potential for change in the downtown area, very exciting, and looking forward to see the plan roll out. Thank you.
Thank you. And while we normally don't do this, just if there's any commission members that would just like any clarification from Representative Maschinsky as far as some of the things that she may be, you know, suggesting, if none, I thank you for your comments. I think there's just, excuse me, is there multiple copies on that or a single copy? Oh, great. Yeah. And then if, yeah, if you could provide that to us, please. Okay, other members of the public who would like to comment? Yes, leading the back. If you could just give us one moment so we're not interrupted. And if you'd please give your name and address and begin with your comments, please.
Thank you. Diane Saunders, Northford Road. I'll add my congratulations with Mary Maschinsky to the job of just getting it done. I know it's a ton of work to get it done. I was particularly impressed with the downtown section, the housing, the transportation, and especially the Simpson Court, those corridors that were modeled after Joe Govea, it was beautiful. I do have some concerns about the conservation side of the document, and I think it's, it really, I don't think it goes far enough. I think it's too specific for tailored projects that are spelled out in the action steps. But I think Conservation Commission spent a lot of time giving you some information, and a couple of items that are not addressed is, one, agriculture. You mention it generically, but there's no follow-up in the action steps whatsoever, except for promoting the continuation of the farmland lease program and community gardens. And a little bit about farm to school. And in fact, the paragraph on farm to school in the action steps combines farm to school with having older kids teaching some of the skills to younger kids. Those are two different, totally different programs. So I had suggested early on to both Conservation Commission, to, when I went to the first session, to please just take the state's generic language for that, for agriculture, that they suggested be put in all the town plans of conservation and development, that paragraph, put it in there. I wish that was in there. I brought the document with me, you could just pull out the paragraph, put it in there. I think we owe a commitment to agriculture in this town. New Haven County is the third largest of the counties in Connecticut in terms of expenditures for agriculture. Hard to believe for our tiny, little, congested county in the middle of the state, third largest consistently, from the state's last two plans of conservation and development to now. And the other thing is, Wallingford, we've talked about the farmland lease program in here, is miniscule. It's miniscule. It's semi-retired, or farmers supplementing their land with use of open space. It's a great program, and I'm glad that's included and given a priority, but we have huge farms in this town that contribute millions of dollars to the Connecticut economy, and that's not reflected. Blue Hills Farm, Jeremiah's Barns, the wineries, Cook's Farm, many of the East Side Farms, and all the small farms that don't show up because you don't see them, they're small family farms. So I just wish there had been some correlation to the general statement about agriculture and a follow-through in the steps. And then the rest is just, the other issue that I think we've missed on is, I don't see the reservoirs in here as part of open space. The last Plan of Conservation and Development had a chart that had all the open spaces listed by type, for example, agricultural land, reserved town open space, development rights, open land, reservoirs, streams, et cetera, parks, schools, playgrounds. And to me, as a taxpayer, that last one with the chart in there from the last plan was vitally important. I looked at that and thought, that's where my tax money goes, and yes, I remember, we have this, we have this, we have this, because that gives you something when a committee sits around and talks about action steps, you think, yeah, well, there are 18 playgrounds, there are 24 parks, but we don't see any detail in here about that. It would just be a one-page chart that I think would be of help to the public to have in there, just to be consistent with the last plan. The maps, I think, need a little bit of, there are two maps that I discussed with Casey today that appear to have an error. The map on page 74 for the sewer areas, they show a sewer area for Tamarack Swamp. I don't think we're putting any sewers in Tamarack Swamp. That huge section of blue shows as sewer, sewer service area, and it's actually Tyler Mill Preserve, and specifically the section that's Tamarack Swamp. It's pretty huge.
Please identify the page.
Page 74. The other map that has a very obvious error is, or should be corrected, I'm sorry, is page 35. It shows in green, light green, for rural residential, Govea Vineyards, which is agriculture, and across the street, the land of the Farnum family, which is shown as dark green and agriculture. They both had their development rights purchased by the state. They're both limited to agriculture only, not to residential. And so even on the town open space map, those are called out as bright pink as other open spaces. And I asked Casey about it today, and she said that the committee had tried to decide what to do with that, and I suggested we just follow what the state does. So I brought the states tonight, the state calls those out as protected farmland. That's what the state calls it, as part of open space, protected farmland, all over the state. In fact, they have a map for that. So I suggest that happen, just because they're so large. And that's basically it. Thank you very much. But I really love the job on the downtown and all those other improvements. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Although, if I might ask you just to stay for a moment, because you referenced some maps, and Casey, perhaps you can help us out here. As far as, you know, the page numbers of the maps that you had mentioned, doesn't correspond to...
Yeah, I think Diane has an older version...
What I was given today.
Yeah, I...
It was sent to me today, so...
Yeah, but not from, not by us.
No, it's the only one I've ever seen, though.
Yeah, so the one, yeah, the one, the, in the version, in the newer version that you have, I'm trying to find...
Yeah, if you could identify those pages for us, please, Casey.
Similarly, the page 13, it says open space inventory. It shows public open space, land trust, private open space. Again, doesn't have water and doesn't have the purchase of development rights, protected properties. And they're significant, there's...
So page 80 is, it's now called the utility service area boundaries. That's what she referenced as the sewer service area boundaries, and that was based on a change that was requested by the Water and Sewer Division and the Public Utilities Commission, the change in title. And then the open space... Page 18 is the open space inventory.
That's 13 here, but it's lacking, I'm suggesting they put water, because water is on our open space inventory, and, and there's no key for water. Unless it's fixed in your version, because there's a blue box that's cut off at the bottom of mine, and it doesn't say what it is. You might have fixed it. But also the category of reserved and protected open space, which is huge. You see the big pink, it's a big area in East Wallingford. It's shown as housing now. There never could be housing there. It gives people a misimpression when you're looking to plan at a, you know, at a large scale.
So are you suggesting that we should add a separate category for where the development rights have been purchased by the state?
Right, because the state shows it that way, and they also have it in the narrative the same way.
And again, Casey, just so we're singing off the same sheet of music, we're talking about map 18. Is that correct?
The map on page 18 for you guys, which is the open space inventory.
And similarly, the same type of thing is on my page 35, I'm not with your, it says future land use plan, and there it shows rural residential where the land is already protected, and it's a big block.
And that's page 40, Mr. Fitzsimmons indicated.
Yes. It looks like this, Jim. Yep. This big block to the right over here, big area, that should be pink or at least green for agriculture. One land that is, two properties the same across the street, one is shown as agriculture, the other is shown as housing. Just, and for us to do an open space plan, planning based on this, it makes it look like that's all up for development.
So just, so I'm clear, you're talking about the Govea Vineyard, which is shown as rural residential, should be shown, as we discussed, as...
Agriculture or development rights purchased, the same as Farnum across the street, development rights purchased. And I think you told me, Casey, that my only other comment about the biodiversity database map from 2011 is, they should put the new map in there.
Right.
That's totally, because a lot of East Wallingford is now on the blob.
Yeah.
From I-91 over, huge section along 91. My other comment is very specific, along with what Mary Maschinsky stated. I have it on page 15, but it's the goals of how we get there, under protect sensitive and valuable habitats in scenic areas. It says complete riparian buffer work along Wharton Brook. I think that may go in a different category, because it's not a sensitive habitat, but along with that, I think in this whole document, there's no, no reference to, in there, we should have the management plan for Tyler Mill Preserve and Muddy River, because that is a sensitive habitat, and it's a riparian corridor that's two miles long, not a couple hundred yards long. So that should be added to that one, under sensitive and valuable habitats. Management plan for Muddy River Corridor. That's the one clean tributary to the Quinnipiac River. And the other thing is Quinnipiac watershed protection. We had suggested it be included in the Conservation Commission submission, but it's nowhere in here. And my concern about that is, they depend on grants, so they will look to the Plan of Conservation and Development to get grant money for things like the linear trail, and if it's not even in the Plan of Conservation and Development, it could hurt their chances. So that's the Quinnipiac River Watershed Association, and the protection of the Quinnipiac River Corridor should probably be in that riparian section as well.
We do have, obviously, we mapped the watershed areas, and there were some comments from the environmental planner that she requested that we add referencing watershed protection.
Right.
That, do it.
So that those organizations, yeah, so those organizations, like the other one Mary mentioned, can get their grants, because that's important to the state.
Right, okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Casey, just for some clarification, you're, are familiar, or kind of on board with the comments that are made, we have those, we have those comments, so we can further discuss them. We're making sure we don't miss anything here.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think what we'll, what we'll do is, when the public is done commenting, we'll sort of run through the list of, yeah, and make sure everybody's on this.
Other members from the public who would like to comment? Yes, gentleman in the back.
Ed Bradley, Two Hampton Trail. First, I got to apologize for becoming involved this late in the process. Seems like my retirement life is more active and more challenging than my professional life was.
Mr. Bradley, better late than never.
Oh, yeah. My, well, before I get into my comments and questions, on the presentation on page five, I didn't see the inland wetlands commission listed. Is it there?
I'm not sure what you're, when you're saying on page five of the plan, or...
On his presentation, well, I would imagine it's, the one he put up, it looked like page five, it had the whole list of agencies.
Tim, if you could please respond to that?
I'm sitting way in the back, maybe I missed it, but...
Was the list of agencies the agencies that were included in the steering committee or the implementation committee?
It had a whole list of all the agency, economic development, P&amp;Z, Conservation Commission. I didn't see inland wetlands.
That's correct. They, they were not listed on the listing for agencies to be included in the Plan Implementation Committee, since they weren't tasked with any of the specific actions as a lead agency there.
You don't consider them the lead agency?
It's not that we don't consider them a lead agency, it's that the plan has specific recommendations in order to accomplish the goals, and the inland wetlands agency would not be the lead agency for any of those specific recommendations. So the conservation is at times the lead agency, the Planning and Zoning Commission, but based on the nature of the tasks that were selected, inland wetlands wasn't, was not a lead agency for any of those action items.
Wouldn't they have input as far as the, on the east side of town, as far as the aquifer, inland wetlands, Muddy River?
The Planning and Zoning Commission acts as the aquifer protection agency.
My comments and questions more or less refer to page eight, the map, the I-91 corridor to the right over the I-5, IX, and south of that, you'll just see Hampton, which is, I believe, R-18 residential.
This isn't the zoning map, it's the existing land use map, so it shows property by property what it's currently used for.
That's, yeah, those were going to be my questions. Does this show the use today?
Yeah.
In particular, if you look just south of Route 68 there, you'll see a triangle. Is that the Hilton? Okay, and that is zoned as the color code says, commercial, retail. Okay. And that is zoned, as the color code says, commercial, retail, general?
So, that area is zoned I-5?
Yeah, that would be showing, that would be showing the land use.
Right.
It's currently used, that particular parcel.
That's, that's what I'm, see, what I'm, what I'm interested, what I'm trying to get clarification on, is this map versus the zoning today, and what, what's allowed in there?
Sure.
The concern I have in residents out there, a past council member several years ago, tried to encourage P&amp;Z for a zone change for restaurants and gas stations. And the residents naturally, south of that area, have a grave concern over those uses. And
Yep. So, this, this map shows, you'll see around that is all white, because it's vacant right now.
Right.
And that where the Hilton is, is classified as commercial, general, it's a hotel. So, that's why it's that. But there was a fair amount of, a lot of discussion about the I-5 zoning, which is the zoning around that interchange there. And, you know, we're certainly well aware of the proposals over the years. And there was some discussion about revisiting the potentially permitted uses in that zone, but there was, the, the uses that were recommended to be considered are not retail or gas station or restaurant.
Okay. Because there, just recently, and I don't know, maybe five months ago, there was an article. I, I know the landowners and whatnot. They're having a difficult time trying to sell their land, and naturally.
So, we're, part of this conversation and conversations that the Planning and Zoning Commission has had over the last couple of years, is that maybe there would be some uses that aren't, currently, the I-5 is very, very limited. So, maybe there would be some uses, some additional office-type uses that might be appropriate, or maybe some recreational-type uses that might be appropriate. But not, I don't think there's a, a desire or recommendation to do retail or anything like that in that area.
Representative Machinsky spoke of water quality in the Quinnipiac. Water quality in the Muddy River is top priority to the town. Naturally, that feeds in to Mackenzie Reservoir, comes down through Spring Lake, Mackenzie Reservoir, and eventually meanders on down through North Haven into the Quinnipiac. Now, that, that's, this whole area, I've been out there since 1973, and some of you can, can relate to the issues we've had out there with development, erosion control, sedimentation, causing a lot of damage to the lake and to the, to the watershed. Recently, the town did put in extra drainage under Hampton Trail. Took them 22 years, but they finally did it. It's working well, but hasn't really been, been tested. My point is, it's a very, very sensitive area, not only to water quality, I think it's a double A, it used to be a triple A, I believe, class, classification on the water. The wildlife is just abundant out there. You wouldn't believe what's out there. We don't have moose, we don't have mountain lions, but there's everything else out there, from birds of prey to songbird, to bobcats, to lynx, to fisher cats, you name it, coyotes. It's just abundant out there. It's an area that really has to be protective and should be noted as a very sensitive area. I mean, our issues started back when they put Research Parkway in, the road. That was the whole beginning of all the issues out there. Then, maybe some of you remember, on Route 68, there was Miller's Pond there before they straightened the road out. Well, the state, in its infinite wisdom, when they used to flood in that corner on Route 68, knocked the top of the dam off. And subsequent to that, big storms, the dam failed, everything came downstream. Again, I'm gonna, and you may be already hit on, on page nine, there's some bullets in there. I realize this is a resource guide, and it's kind of open-ended, and, but there's some statements in there that are somewhat open-ended, and I guess that's going to require further, further discussion. The first bullet simplified the existing mix of open space setback and site coverage positions, provisions.
Excuse me, Mr. Bradley, if you could slow down, because I believe you have a, perhaps a, a prior
I took it offline.
Casey?
I took it offline this evening. Page nine.
Yeah, page nine, we have
Well, we'll get the, get their recommended
Again, if you could just give us an opportunity to find it, because again, on page nine, ours is a map. It's page 14, I believe.
And, and again, it, it sounds like there's, there's consideration for change in those zones. And I, I guess, change comes under your purview.
That's correct, Planning and Zoning Commission. And again, I think, as our, as our town planner indicated, well, I can't speak for all members of the commission, I think that there, you know, certainly was some discussion with looking at, you know, some of the items that may be already in the, in the I-X zone, to perhaps look to include some of those in the I-5 zone. That, you know, that may be something that we would, would, would consider doing. I think, again, as the town planner indicated, as far as, you know, residential, retail, and all of that, I'm not certain how the commission would act on that. You know, we had have, we had had in the past, some applications looking to change that zone, to do something along that lines, and, you know, those applications were not successful. Again, I, I can't make representations as far as what the, what the commission would do, but I think there is a track record on that.
Yeah. I, I understand there's a balance with, you know, the economic conditions today, and you have the Economic Commission in town looking for growth, and naturally, you have the residents who want to protect this area, and, you know, it, it becomes a concern to us out there.
And I think, again, I think the commission's been sensitive to that in the past.
Right.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
And more so, that's why I think inland wetlands, you know, I heard what you said, Cassie, but I think they should be more involved in this. Maybe I'm jumping the gun, but, you know, I'd like to see more involvement on, on their side. I don't know how involved even the Conservation Commission has been. I know they're on the list.
They had a representative on the steering committee. Each of the sort of agencies that have a sort of topical area in the plan of development, had a representative. Planning and Zoning had three representatives, Town Council had two, everyone else had one. So, Conservation Commission, Board of Ed, EDC, Land Trust, a variety of people. And they did, you know, they did participate a great deal. And they, there are a great deal of, or they do have several of the recommendations in here, do name the Conservation Commission as the lead agency.
Yeah, I haven't had a chance to.
Yeah, it's, it's a lot.
There, there
But yeah, they are named as the lead agency for a lot of, for several recommendations.
Because when I was on the commission, we did have a Yale Forester come in and map out the whole area, and, you know, I don't know if that map is, is still around or not. But I think that's it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Bradley. Other members from the public who would like to speak? Please raise your hand. Before I go back to you, yes, gentlemen.
Good evening. Larry Morganstein, South Main Street. Again, I followed the Plan of Conservation and Development since the beginning. It's been a great process. I've been very excited for the public involvement that's been involved. But right now, what we've got is potential, and a lot of work went into that document for that potential, but it's the follow-through that is of concern to me right now. When Malone and McBroom make their presentations, they stress the Implementation Committee as really key. And I see that as key too, because it ties together all the different agencies in the town. But as a member of the public that also attends Town Council regularly, my concern is that, I'd be remiss not to say that, the response so far from the council in doing that committee is tepid at best, and that is of concern to me. I don't know what power the Planning and Zoning has, but it certainly has the power to recommend and say this is a key implement. And without that, I think a lot of that potential can be lost. I think the example of the last Plan of Conservation and Development, and again, there was a potential document that had a lot to give, but it just didn't go as far as it should have, if at all. So, I just wanted to express that concern tonight, that I can't stress enough that you guys got a chance to really push how important that component is. My final comment on that also is that I think one of the things that excited me about this whole process, and I've said this before, is the public participation. I wish that, and I don't know if it's too late, but having a public member on the Implementation Committee, I think still, as a liaison, would add a lot to it. There's a big difference between me getting up here and having somebody behind that table. And I would recommend that, if there is an Implementation Committee, that a member of the public, as there was in the Steering Committee, be also part of that. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Just to, I guess, comment on your concerns about the Implementation Committee. I think certainly at our, probably one of the very first meetings that we had, it was identified that it was very important, while we spend all this time putting a plan together, to make sure that there is, you know, some implementation. There is some, some follow-up. Again, it's, I think I mentioned, and Casey mentioned, we can't force people to do things, but certainly, there can be some monitoring and some, you know, some rapport with other agencies and commissions. And I, I understand, as far as your concern with the Town Council, whether or not to set up the Implementation Committee. But Casey, correct me if I'm wrong, if the Town Council decided not to, and they have, what, 90 days from the adaption of the plan to set up an Implementation Committee, then in fact, the Planning and Zoning Commission could set up a subcommittee. Is that correct? And then, much like we had with the Steering Committee, because that was a subcommittee of the Planning and Zoning, or that was a committee formed by the Planning and Zoning Commission, is that not correct?
That's basically correct. The, the difference with the Steering Committee is that the statute specifically enables the creation of the Steering Committee, whereas if the Planning and Zoning Commission, if, if the council opted not to create the Implementation Committee, then this, the Planning and Zoning Commission can always, you know, always has the option of creating a subcommittee of yourselves, or some of yourselves, and then you, you would be able to invite representatives of the individual agencies. You couldn't compel membership, but neither could
No, neither could, yeah.
Right.
So, I think that that, there are, there is another option that would be available to us, if for whatever reason, the Town Council did not decide to, you know, have an ordinance to create that committee. But clearly, you know, as you mentioned, and I think all members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, as well as the Steering Committee, felt that to, to have an Implementation Committee, to have representatives from the town tracking the plan on a periodic basis, is, is key to the whole thing. Otherwise, I won't say what's the point of doing it, but it, it becomes less effective.
And I would just reiterate to that. The plan is a vision statement, and if we have each of our commissions, boards, doing their own thing, and again, we, we work as a town, and what this Implementation Committee can do is tie all those different visions into one thing. I think everybody in general does think that we're working together, but this really does tie that together. It's, it's not an easy task, and I think it only becomes harder if there isn't that meeting group of all the different commissions. So, thank
Good. Thank you for your comments. Again
If I could just add one other footnote to that. The ordinance committee at its meeting this past Thursday did opt not to create an, or to pursue an ordinance in regard to creation of the Implementation Committee, and that was the recommendation of the Law Department that I think, that it, they could do it via ordinance, but they didn't need to. So, now, as, assuming this goes forward as currently recommended in the Plan of Development, the Town Council will have the option of creating a committee. It just wouldn't be via ordinance.
Okay.
And I would just add, at a previous Town Council meeting, they did discuss it before the ordinance met, and at that time, I'd say it was pretty split, and while they didn't take a vote, it really was not reassuring what I saw and heard that night.
Thank you. And again, before I go back to Ms. Sanders, just any other members of the public who would like to comment on the plan? Seeing none, again, Ms. Sanders, I believe you had some additional comments.
Thank you, Jim. Diane Saunders, Northford Road. I forgot that on the future land use map, under industrial, the blue, I believe it shows Tilcon, that big area out on the right is, I'm assuming Tilcon, as industrial. And I wonder if it might be better to create another category and call that mining, for the simple reason that that's all they're allowed to do there. They're under, you know, some scrutiny by the state for mining. And if they were ever to move, I can't, once that mountain is down to the limit that they're allowed, they're going to move, obviously. And I'd hate to see other industrial up for grabs there, at the headwaters of our drinking water supply. So, if we put it mining, or some other category that better fits than industrial, because it's such a large land area. And on the other side of it, you can't see from this map, but on the middle field side, is conservation area. So, it would, it would be better to get a second look at that than just pass it off as industrial. And I'd just like to thank Casey, I had saved, I had brought with me the state paragraph I talked about for agriculture, and she already printed out and has it today. So, thank you, Casey.
Good. Thank you. Again, other members from the public? Yes, Mr. Bradley again.
Ed Bradley, Two Hampton Trail. Just a quick question. On the map on page eight, the blue area on High Hill Road, what's public? Is it institutional?
Is that the, at the top of the page, Grow Wallingford's economic base? Yeah. And you're asking, what is the blue?
I believe that's the USPS facility there, the mail distribution facility? Are you talking, sorry, are you referring to the dark blue right on 91?
It would be, I assume the red is where Bristol Myers is, in High Hill Road. High, High Hill Road.
Let's just, excuse me, can we just make sure we're all looking at the same maps here?
Page eight?
Yeah, no, but your, your page numbers are different than
It's your page 13.
So, it's page 13. Gotcha. And we're looking at the, is it the, the blue that says
Yeah, High Hill
But it says public
The west side, the west side of High Hill.
Yeah, and that's labeled as
It's a medium, me, uh, let's see. No, yeah, it says public institutional, if the color's right. Or does it, or is it referring to the lighter blue, utility infrastructure? right. Or does it, or is it referring to the lighter blue, utility infrastructure? Because the power lines run through there.
Yeah, that's, I was gonna say, I think that's where the power line, isn't there a substation there, something like that?
The power lines run through there, so it must be the-
That runs through that, so I believe that that's, that relates to that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Other members of the public? All right, at this point in time, I don't want to, well, there's no other members of the public who'd like to comment, but I don't want to close the public hearing, just for the fact that we have numerous items that have been recommended by the public, and I think it's beneficial for us to go over those, Casey, and just in case we might have missed something where members of the public would like to further comment, I certainly want to give them the opportunity to do that, rather than close the public hearing and, you know, perhaps miss out on something. So, I know you have been very diligently, or you and Tim, very diligently writing down some of the comments and recommendations. Perhaps if we could, you know, go through those, and then, you know, commission members can comment on, can comment on that.
Sure thing. So, I think Casey and I will jump back and forth on this a little bit, but going from the top, Mary Mashinsky's primary comments, we're first noting the importance of pursuing funding opportunities towards-
And Tim, could you just pull that just a little bit closer to you, please?
Sure thing, how's that?
That's great.
Great. So, pursuing funding opportunities towards transit-oriented development opportunities in the train station area, and then two more, two primary comments, I guess. One towards connecting recreation neighborhoods and workplaces with respect to the entrance of the town center and the Hall Avenue improvements, and pointing towards, pointing out the link between the senior center and linear trail facilities on page 22, and then skipping forward to pages 74 and 75, also noting this in the language on that page, as well as adding the Quinnipiac River Linear Trail Advisory Committee as a partner on these unrelated goals to that. And some specific descriptions of the path of that, that trail linkage, as well as bringing up the River Advocates of South Central Connecticut as an important partner in ongoing work within Wallingford, on working on invasives, river trails, internships with youth and social services and so on, and bringing them in on items on pages 23 and 44, as well as in the key to the goals listing as a partnership for relevant Quinnipiac River and Community Lake projects. Diane Saunders?
If we could perhaps, maybe kind of, perhaps keep in a little bit of order as far as what some of the individuals had mentioned, so that way, give the commission members the opportunity to comment, rather than having a large, you know, a large broad number, so I think some of us may forget.
Can I recommend that, instead of doing it piece by piece for this one, since Mary Mashinsky was kind enough to provide us with a list, that we just, like with the others' suggested revisions, that we just say incorporation of the comments provided, testimony of River Advocates of South Central concerning the Wallingford Plan of Conservation and Development, dated June 6, 2016, and then that would include Community Lake, or the Community Lake references, and inclusion of that organization, and then the other ones would be that Tim already reviewed. I'm gonna name those one more time. Would be noting the, noting the importance of pursuing opportunities regarding transit-oriented development, connecting the recreation neighborhoods and workplaces along the Hall Avenue entrance to downtown, and revising the Community Lake and connected recreational areas map to depict the modified linear trail.
Okay, thank you. Now that we have that, commission members with any, like to make any comments or any discussion on that, before we move on to some of the other suggestions.
Yes, I have one. I guess the Community Lake, the official name is Community Lake Planning Committee. Is that right, Mary? Community Lake Planning Committee?
Not sure, there's a defunct group that was working on Community Lake restoration. Is that the one the project refers to?
The plan refers to disassembling that and creating a new-
New committee.
-Community Lake Committee to look at sort of the broader area around Community Lake.
Right. So, my recommendation was that, in the new committee, you would include the Quinnipiac River Linear Trail Advisory Committee, since they're the main citizen group working on designing the trail and seeking funding for it.
Thank you. As far as any other commission members, I guess it's fair to say, at least from this particular point in time, while we're not voting on any amendments, that people are in agreement, general agreement with what's been presented by Representative Mashinsky. Good. So, let's move on to some of the comments from other members of the public.
So, next up in terms of comments, and I'll lump Diane's two sets of comments together for purposes of this piece of the discussion. Her general notes were that the conservation elements of the plan were somewhat too tailored and overly specific, and that there was not enough additional provisions regarding agriculture. She noted that the state provides some generic language towards promoting agricultural businesses, actually, I'll just read this off, "to promote agricultural businesses in support of industries that are vital to the local and regional economy, while simultaneously preserving prime farmland through the acquisition of development rights, and to the extent practical, the avoidance, minimization, and/or mitigation of the loss or conversion of agricultural lands associated with state-sponsored development actions." So, that provides some, some language towards that general agricultural promotion. She noted that the farmland lease program is a very small component of agriculture within the town, and that big farms play a larger role there. She also noted that in the open space mapping, that reservoirs are not noted out as their own open space categories, nor are playgrounds, parks, and things of that nature. A couple of other pages in which she noted perhaps inconsistencies, or one on the sewer service, now the utility service area map, I want to stress, that Tamarack Swamp is included in that, that on page 35, the Gueye Farm parcel and the parcel across from it, both have had their development rights purchased by the state and are therefore protected farmland. On page 18, that, I believe, again, depicting those elements of water and reservoirs and those purchased development rights, noting, again, that the purchase of development rights on page 40, making the land use designations for Gueye Farm consistent there, and on page 20, treating Morton Brook as sensitive habitat. See, anything, oh, lastly, that the management plan for the Tyon Mill area and Muddy River is an important piece to be included in the plan with regard to watershed protection for grant eligibility. And I think that that lines well with the comments provided by Aaron O'Hare, relative to making some of those inclusions to the plan. Anything you want to add, Casey?
So, I think that the suggested revisions associated with those comments would be, and Diane, feel free to correct me, that, one, incorporate the state's language in regard to promotion of agribusiness, as provided to you tonight, add reservoirs on the open space map, add a list of all open space in town with classifications, including parks, playgrounds, reservoirs, et cetera, remove Tamarack Swamp from the utility service map, add a category on all applicable maps for purchased development rights, separate from other types of open space, modify the Gueye Winery, along those lines, never mind, that would be incorporated in the development rights category. So, I think that is everything. Yes.
Also, the mining aspect, do we have that?
Yes, the mining aspect, as one additional piece there to make some distinction, whether it's in the mapping or in the text, to make clear the intention for that piece of land.
And Casey, you're gonna provide all of that wording to Mr. Fitzsimmons, is that correct?
And I'll, I should also note in here, in respect to, I believe, Tamarack Swamp, that the utility service area boundaries are something that, we had a good back-and-forth discussion with the folks there at the Water and Sewer Division. They've provided us with some CAD mapping of the boundaries of that area, as was adopted in their agreement with the various state agencies, I believe in 2010 or 2011. And so, we can certainly take a look at what the situation is with regard to Tamarack Swamp, but whether it's in or out of that area isn't really a policy decision that we are making, but rather just a reflection of what was agreed to in that process.
Thank you. Mr. Fitzsimmons has a question.
Just a comment, Mr. Chairman, and I guess because, and I made the reference to my friends on the right, I mean, a lot of comments on the maps. Could we just, I mean, I think unless there's objection, could we just include updating to the maps as discussed? Because you have all the detail, I, none of, I don't think anyone found them objectionable, but it certainly generated a lot of comments regarding the maps. Is that, would that, is it not specific enough, or is it okay to be that?
No, I think as discussed on the record tonight-
Yeah.
...is perfectly acceptable, and we've reiterated them, so I don't think there should be any confusion.
Okay. Other commission members, yes?
Yeah, just have a question. So, when she went down the list and mentioned that the last POCD had various properties, including playgrounds and parks, do we believe, or do we know for sure whether everything on that past list is now current?
That past list has been updated since the last plan was done, but it's not, it's not fully up to date, so we'll take whatever hasn't been included in the last few years and add it.
And is that a list that's officially sanctioned as correct, and we can just say the corrected list is the list we're including?
Yep, so we'll take the one from the last plan, and we'll update it.
Thank you. Mr. Fitzsimmons?
If I could add to that, it came up at one of the workshops, because, and I remember that list in particular, because even though it was a good list, and I, it doesn't list the other various pieces. Like, it didn't list land trust pieces, because technically they're not owned by the town, they're owned by the land trust, which is a nonprofit. So, in the implementation, it says the town threw parks and rec, and others should document all things, because if it's just a town-owned, and you cut out the land trust property, you're losing some open space.
Yeah, that's true.
Isn't that, so I think it's buried, you know, in this really big document, but it basically said, update that list to include other pieces, you know, and not just the town piece, but land trust property is different, you know, right?
Right. The list included all town-owned properties only.
So, was, it was, did include land trust towns?
And then, we do have a separate, the land use map, or the open space map, which Malone and McBroom used-
Used for this.
...in order, and then updated, that shows all of the open space land, but we don't have a full associated list for every piece.
Thank you. Other commission members? Yes, Mr. Cohen.
I just want to go back to the riparian buffer area around Warren Brook, and just make sure we included the management plan for Muddy River. I'm not sure if I heard that.
No, you're right. Okay, so we also have include references to the riparian buffer protection along the Muddy River?
Yeah, there's a management plan-
Management plan.
...for the Muddy River.
Okay. So, include a recommendation for riparian buffer management plan along the Muddy River. And then I did also have a note for, to add the Quinnipiac River Linear Trail Advisory Committee as a support agency. I left that one out.
Yep, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Other commission members? Okay, moving on.
So, I'll, the next set of comments were from Ed Bradley. He noted the lack of representation of the Inland Wetlands Commission on the list of member boards and committees to the Plan Implementation Committee, and that was discussed a little bit. Noted some concerns regarding the area around Route 68, and questioned whether there would be changes towards retail gas station and restaurants in that area, and emphasized the role of water quality on the Muddy River and that area, emphasized this is a sensitive area with a lot of wildlife and a lot of biodiversity, and noted that it should be protected and really called out as a sensitive area, and also had some questions regarding zone changes for the I-5 and I-X area.
Okay, and the, I think those were all incorporated into our previous discussion. So, I think that's, I think that's everything.
Commission members with just any comments as far as, those comments, as far as incorporating any of those? I guess my comment would be, I know we talked about inland wetlands, I guess my concern is, I understand Mr. Bradley's comments, but I think we have a fairly broad representation, you know, on the proposed Implementation Committee, and I know we had quite a bit of discussion as far as the size of it, and if you get it a little bit too big, it becomes very unwieldy. So, at least from my perspective, I feel very comfortable with what we've recommended in the plan for, you know, members, membership of the Implementation Committee, so I'd kind of open that up to other, other commission members.
I would agree.
All right. The next set of comments were from Larry Morgenstein, who noted that follow-through and the role of the implementation is key in the success of the plan. He expressed some concerns over the Town Council's support for taking on the role of creating the Implementation Committee, and questioned whether Planning and Zoning might be able to take on that role of creating it as a subcommittee, which I believe was, we established, could occur. He also brought up the idea of having a public member included on the Plan Implementation Committee.
Again, other, you know, commission members' comments? Again, I guess I come back to what I initially said as far as the size of the committee and what was initially decided upon. Other commission members have any comments on that? Yes, Gina?
I think we need to be prepared. I don't know if other people have watched that meeting, the flavor of-
Oh, yeah, and I agree with you as far as the council meeting and all of that. Foolish me, but I take it, if the council doesn't, whatever the council does or doesn't do, we have the ability, I think as Casey had mentioned, that if they don't act, that we have the ability to set up a, a subcommittee of the, you know, Planning and Zoning Commission. And I certainly think, and I think I speak for all members of the commission, as well as members of the Steering Committee, that was one of the key items, to have an Implementation Committee, and that was a very key item and something that we will, we will have. I feel very confident with that.
Yeah.
Do you'd like to add something, Casey?
I think Mr. Cohen was about to say something.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was actually gonna save this for the end, but since we're speaking about it now- about it now, and, and before I put Tim on the spot, I just want to say, you know, my thanks to you and Rebecca for doing a great job on this. Because I, I do think with, you know, the number of minor changes, overall, it's a pretty good plan. So now I'm going to put you on the spot, and it concerns the Implementation Committee. Because I, too, agree that, you know, this is really critical to our success. So what I'm, what I want to ask is, you know, there's 169 towns in Connecticut that have had to do this. How many of those towns, you know, put together an implementation committee? How did they do it? If you know. And, you know, was that something, you know, the other towns as well considered, you know, success criteria?
So I'm not aware off the top of my head of towns that have structured a formal implementation committee of this nature. I'm not sure if, you can speak to it, Casey?
As part of this process, when this was being discussed, there's a listserv of planners out there, so I sent out this question, asking, did other towns have implementation committees, and how were they done? And I didn't, I don't have the responses with me that I got back, but I do remember that Simsbury was one of them. There were several others, I would say, I got maybe half a dozen responses, which is a lot for the listserv. And everyone who did have one, I, I had only but positive responses from the communities that did have them, in terms of how, in terms of the impact that they had. The different communities, everybody did it a little bit differently. It sort of depended on what their form of government was. Some, in some communities, it was all administrative, so it was all staff. In some communities, it was all legislative, so it was the legislative body. I would say probably the most common was creation via the town council, or whatever the other legislative body was, but there was usually a big, as, as sort of we've, or as Mylon and McBroom has recommended, administrative component, because obviously those different agencies are the people involved. So it was a positive response that I got, but not everybody does it.
So, you know, could, could I ask Tim and Rebecca to maybe follow up on that question? I mean, I don't know if, you know, you're, you're actually done, you know, with the P O C D, you know, if you have any time left that, you know, the town of Wallingford can impose on you. I think, you know, this is a pretty important part of, you know, this plan, and I'd really like to find out, you know, what the numbers are, you know, across the state for this implementation committee.
I, I think we can certainly take a look and see what the, what the range of practice has been out there. I think, just speaking broadly to towns' approaches to plans of conservation development, there's a wide range of degrees to which towns engage in with making a concerted effort to follow up on those, on the recommendations of the plan, and I think Wallingford certainly has put a, a lot of effort forward towards making that happen, and I think the Plan Implementation Committee will be a good way to keep that momentum coming out of this process.
I, I would just like to, you know, add one thing to this, and, you know, leading up to today, you know, I think Casey has done a real good job in a lot of the applications that have come before us, and, you know, she has noted when an application does fit into, you know, the P O C D. And, you know, I, I see Casey as, you know, a real important piece of this as well, to try and, you know, get applications to, you know, fall into our criteria. So you've done a really good job, and hopefully that'll continue.
Jeff, just for clarification, but you are in favor, no matter what other towns are doing.
Absolutely.
You're clearly in favor of an implementation.
Oh, yeah, I, I think that's, that's critical.
Okay, good. And Gina, I believe you had some comments.
Yes, I think it sounds like we'll get from Tim and Casey some idea of how other towns have done such a thing, and one of the other things that was discussed was timelines. So at what pace did implementation occur? I think there may be some fear on the part of, whether it's departments, or whether it's the council, the people, you know, that need to do this work, how often is it going to meet? And I think from our perspective, if we can give some idea of, over what timeline does that make things move forward in a way that works? Or does it, you know, if you go too fast or too slow, do you, you know, lose interest or not, not get things where you need to be? So it's how, and it's also, I think, time. And yes, I'm in favor, we definitely need an implementation committee.
I suspect that the answer in terms of sort of progress will be different for every single.
Of course, yeah, but again, some sort of an outline that gives some, some ideas, yeah.
And just along those, those lines, obviously you do, this is your document, so you are the ones adopting the Plan of Conservation and Development. You can modify that recommendation as you see fit. There was a lot of discussion on the Steering Committee as to how this, the implementation committee should be implemented, and this was the recommendation of the Steering Committee, but I just want to make sure that, and I will also comment that there was what I would categorize as a mixed response, I think, by the council in the discussion, but they did not vote to make any sort of modification to the plan, or to recommend any modification to the, to the recommendation. So the only other thing that I would put out there is, you have the option to add sort of a, a second alternative if the implementation committee were not to be created within 90 days or 150 days, or something along those lines.
And Casey, if you could just please understand what the process is for the, for the Planning and Zoning Commission to modify, you know, this, how would, how would that occur? And would have to be notified, or if there is any notification, to any other agencies?
Well, you could make a revision tonight and adopt that as part of the initial adoption action, or if further down the line, you wanted to make a formal modification to the adopted plan, formal amendment to the adopted plan. That would involve the public hearing process again. Anyone, basically, we could propose it, and you would hold another public, public hearing along these lines.
Okay, good. Does that kind of entail all of the comments from the public, or at least some of the recommendations from the public that we've, we've discussed?
I believe it does, and then also there were the three discussed at the beginning, the, the comments from the environmental planner, the comments from the Public Utilities Commission, and the inclusion of town administration in the action agenda.
Good, okay. All right, again, the public hearing is still open, I think members of the public have had an opportunity at least to hear some of the discussion from the members of the commission. Before I entertain a motion to close the public hearing, I'll give the public just one last opportunity to voice any comments that they, that they may have. Thank you. Yes?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to ask a technical question, maybe of the consulting room.
If you could please just identify yourself again to the record.
Mary Bishinsky, 188 South Cherry. On the future land use plan, the current Blue Hills Orchard is shown as commercial. Is that because the orchard is currently listed as commercial instead of agricultural?
Speaking generally to how the, the future land use plan was constructed, it generally followed based on the assessors' designations of what's in there, with some targeted changes for specific areas where the Steering Committee had discussed suitable changes to, to certain areas of emphasis, I guess.
Okay, but does that mean that the town zoning plan intends that to be a future commercial development? Or does that mean that the current orchard is considered a commercial development?
I think it would, it would point towards the latter, that the orchard is intended to stay in its current use.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. At this point in time, seeing no other comments from the public, I would entertain a motion that we close our public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I move the commission close the public hearing on the proposed Plan of Conservation and Development.
Second. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed abstentions? And at this point in time, I guess just like to open it up for any further discussion from commission members on, on what we've discussed this evening, if anyone would like to make any final comments before we have a, a motion on, on our plan. Yes, Mr. Fitzsimmons?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I think I'd certainly echo the comments of, of the chairman and Commissioner Cohen, and pass along my thanks to the folks at Mylon and McBroom, and I think it was a tremendous undertaking by you folks, as well, as Jeff mentioned, Casey, too. This is a big project, considering, you know, you're running the office, you're downstaff, and you're trying to maintain, you know, things. So I, I certainly would express my thanks as a member of the public of Wallingford, a member of the commission. I, I think part of it is, this is, it's unfortunate we only have eight people here from the public and one person from the press, because this process involved a lot more people from town. I mean, and I, I've sat up here a few years, this is the planning portion of our job. You know, if we were discussing a new Five Guys on Route 5, or a new Sonic, or, you know, we'd have a lot more people in here, and that's the zoning piece, but this is really, this is where, this is the most important thing that we do, is the planning. And so I, I think this document is something that, I think, based upon the comments, it, it should become a document that doesn't sit on the shelf. It definitely has to be worked, has to be used. I am strongly in favor of the implementation committee that we would, that we would form. I think that the comment of adding people from the public, I, I'm full of agreement that I think the representation is various boards and commissions, which are all people from town. I think the one comment we had at one of the workshops was, it would be town people, not town staff. And I think that's a big difference, because in the plan, it talks about boards and commissions, not staff. It, it does lead to a question, which I'll, I'll get to, but I do think, you know, the process has been going on so long, I think when we started this, none of us knew Bristol Myers' plan to leave town. And so if you think about the importance of a plan, you know, during the middle of it, they said, "Make sure we add some reference to what would happen to that," because we can expect something different, certainly in 2026, to happen at the Bristol Myers site. So that's the importance of the plan. I think updating the maps, I think the, the public participation in this plan has been significant. I mean, I think this is the first time, working on a plan where we actually used the internet, used Survey Monkey, and had, had a lot of participation, a lot of different workshops, a lot of different locations, so I think that this was a very detailed process, and I think we got significant public input. I did, I did have a thought here, and I, I just, one of the things that I found interesting during our plan is, is buried in this, on page 99, it talks about the traffic counts. And it talks about how traffic today is less than it was five years, 10 years ago, the last plan development. Nobody in town seems to believe it, but I know talking to people during some of the workshops, it's amazing, because of the changes in technology, people working from home, shopping online, it definitely has, you know, tremendously changed, you know, some of the patterns, traffic uses, and, and I think the idea of a lot of focus on downtown in this plan is very helpful. But, but I'm an optimist. I sit up here, I'm an optimist, I live in town, I went to school in town, you know, I, I don't work in town as much as I'd like, but I think, you know, I'm also a realist, having lived in this town. The plan does have a lot, you know, the, the plan does reference Wood and Kaplan. And that's the one piece that I don't want people to say, "Well, what about Wood and Kaplan, what about Wood and Kaplan?" It's been in every plan the last two times. So it is important, but it's, but it's one piece of this, and I think, you know, I think the idea of including it makes perfect sense. It is, it is not the key to downtown, but it's a big part of downtown, so I think it's important that we, I think we've addressed it as best we could, but I think the acknowledgement that the chairman said is, our ability to influence is limited. You know, but it's nice to put it in the plan, but we, I think I'd certainly like to see something happen there. But that's up to the council, it's up to the mayor, it's up to other people, but I think we should use our influence, because the, the nice thing about a Plan of Conservation and Development, it's one of three things by state law we have to do. And it really, I appreciate the way Casey outlined it to the commission and the chairman did, this is our document, you know, so I, I think I'd hopefully that, as a group, we could support it with the council and talk it up to make sure that we, we get that. Just one other comment, and Casey, I think it probably has to do with, for you or Tim, is, it needs a, a page two, because you're not listed anywhere, or the commission, or the Steering Committee. The chairman was very nice to indicate all the people who participated, and I think Tim and Rebecca's name, so if we could just add a title page with, with that, I think that'd be appropriate. And I, I actually did have some questions versus just expounding. Casey, it's probably related to the memo, but I want to, through you, Mr. Chairman, make sure we have a discussion, because it addresses specifically a comment that one of the members of the public had. So I don't want to split hairs here, but the memo from George Adair dated today is 6/6/26. It's from him, C.C., the mayor in the P U C. The memo says, "Comments from the Public Utilities Commission." Now, this is where I'm going to split hairs. Is it a commission memo or the staff memo? Because I have the same comment on Erin O'Hare's memo, where she specifically says, "These are her comments, not the commission comments." So I don't know, did the P U C discuss the plan, or is it a staff discussion? Because that would go sideways with the idea of public input versus staff input. I mean, and I, I'm not, but I want to make sure that we're very clear, because members of the commission would be town residents, town staff don't necessarily have to be town residents. So, and I'm not, just want to make sure there's no daylight between the two.
The comments that we received today were from Mr. Adair as, as staff to the P U C. Those were based on comments that were previously provided by the Water and Sewer Division, senior engineer of the Water and Sewer Division. I don't know if those initial comments were discussed with the P U C or not. They, they were provided to me in a form, and you have a copy of it, in a form of a memo from staff, from the, the senior engineer at Water and Sewer. The comments from the environmental planner are her comments, they are not either of the commission's comments that she represents. So as, as best I understand, those comments were not provided to or discussed with either of the commissions that she staffs.
All right. I mean, the, the reason I mentioned it, Mr. Chairman, is the relation of, if we're going to have a successful implementation, it should filter beyond just the town staff to the town boards and commission. So I, and again, I don't know how we can, but maybe we can stress that when we get into the implementation piece. But it just seems in this, you know, we're at the, we're at the, we're rounding home plate. We're rounding third, excuse me, we're rounding third, not rounding. We're rounding third, and, and I just, all of a sudden, there's a, it seems a little different to me.
Yeah.
So, because I think we were counting on citizen commissioners who work with the town staff, you know, so.
And that, that was the request that was made, that they, that it be sort of passed along for discussion. The majority of, the, the majority of agencies, although less so with P U C and Inland Wetlands, but Conservation Commission, you know, the, many of the agencies that have staff also had a member, a resident member as a member of the Steering Committee, but not so with these two.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzsimmons. Other commission members? Casey, any, I guess any final comments that you would like to make?
Nope, just, I'm looking forward to moving into the, the next step of this.
Good, thank you. I guess from my perspective, I think I've made my, kind of, my, my opening remarks, I think touched on a good deal of what Mr. Fitzsimmons had indicated, as far as appreciation for people, members of the public, members of the Steering Committee coming out. And while we do have, or had only a very few number of people from the public who've been here this evening, I certainly thank them for coming this evening, giving us their comments. Clearly, you know, their input, I believe, has been listened to by the commission, and have been some very good comments, and, you know, the majority of those comments, I suspect, will be, you know, implemented in our, or rather, included in our, in our plan. So again, I'd like to thank everyone who's here this evening for, for coming out. If there's no further comments from staff or from commission members at this point in time, if Mr. Fitzsimmons, if you're ready, I would, would entertain a motion on, on our Plan of Conservation and Development. our Plan of Conservation and Development and approving it.
Sure. Mr. Commission, Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt the Wallingford Plan of Conservation and Development 2016-2026, dated March 23, 2016, revised to June 6, 2016, subject to the following revisions, to be effective Monday, June 13, 2016. Number one, inclusion of town administration as a supporting agency for applicable recommended strategies in the action agenda. Number two, incorporation of the comments in the memorandum from Erin O'Hare, environmental planner, dated June 2, 2016, as discussed this evening. Number three, incorporation of the comments from the Public Utilities Director, dated June 6, 2016, as discussed tonight. Number four, add note pursuing opportunities regarding the town transportation district. Number five, address connecting recreation neighborhoods and workplaces along Hall Avenue. Number six, address the reuse of Community Lake and the Connected Recreational Areas map to depict modified linear trail. Number seven, incorporate testimony of the river advocates of South Central Regional Council of Governments concerning the Wallingford P-O-C-D, dated June 6, 2016. Number eight, incorporate the State of Connecticut language in regard to promoting agriculture business. Number nine, add town reservoirs on the open space map as discussed. Number 10, add a list of all open space in town with classification, classifications including parks, playgrounds, reservoirs, et cetera. Number 11, remove Tamarack Swamp from the utility service map. Number 12, add category on all applicable maps for purchased development rights identified properties. Number 13, add distinction on applicable maps of mining for Tilcon properties as discussed this evening. Number 14, add the Quimpeac River Linear Trail Advisory Committee as supporting agency where applicable. And number 16, include recommendation for Ripican Buffer Management Plan along the Muddy River as discussed.
One, one correction, I believe it was comment number six, oh, five, the River Advocates, the correct name of the organization is River Advocates of South Central Connecticut.
I'm sorry, the River Advocates of South Central Connecticut, as noted, would be my revision to my motion.
Thank you.
We have a motion on the application, is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'd entertain a, a second on the motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cohen, voting beginning with Gina.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, and yes.
Yes, plan has been adopted. Again, I would like to thank everyone for being here this evening, and again, I'd like to thank Casey, our costello, our town planner, and also Tim Baird for all of the work that they have put into it, and again, if you would please relay our thanks to Rebecca Augur also for all of the work that she's done on this plan. With that, seeing no other further business, Mr. Fitzsimmons, you look like you'd like to say something.
Mr. Chairman, move to adjourn.
To have a second? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, we're adjourned. Have a good evening.